All right, welcome, everybody. My name is Garth Johnson. I am the Iverson Museum of Arts Paul Phillips and Sharon Sullivan curator of ceramics, and I'm delighted for only the second time since the start of the pandemic to be actually broadcasting live from the museum. So I now have access to objects from the museum collection, and that is bringing me some small comfort as well. So I'm going to introduce our special guest for today and then do a little bit of housekeeping, make some announcements, and talk about some of the history of the Iverson and teapots. But our special guest today, and she has many of her friends in the virtual room with us, is someone that I know and love, and it's one of my favorite people, Karen Selwyn. So Karen, say hi.
Hello, everybody.
So I was, I was really happy to come into my position at the Iverson a little bit under two years ago, and to know that the Iverson had a relationship with Karen. She spends a lot of the year in Rochester, and together with her husband Philip, who passed away last year, they've embarked on this collecting odyssey. And it was really my privilege to get to know Philip. And Philip and Karen helped to make my entry here in the Iverson, sort of happy and seamless one in a lot of ways. Karen collects a lot of the artists that I value. So there, here was an instant introduction and pipeline to a lot of contemporary artists that I value. So we're going to be talking to Karen about her own history with collecting. We're going to be talking with the artist Eric Saratella, who actually has some great roots here in central New York. And we are going to, for the first time ever, be doing a bit of taped sorcery. So Karen and I earlier today had a conversation with the artist Krista Assad, who couldn't be with us live, but we wanted her voice to be heard. All right, I'm going to show a few slides, and as I do, I want to encourage everybody to look on the upper right-hand corner of your screen. You can see that you can switch from speaker view or from gallery view, which shows you a Brady Bunch variety of squares of everyone who's watching. And I do encourage you to share your video here on the screen, but please stay on mute. But if you switch between the gallery view and speaker view, you'll be able to see our image bigger. Both Karen and I are going to be actually getting teapots and showing them for our cameras, and plus, you want to see our beautiful faces as well. So please switch to speaker view if you, if you can. Also, maybe go full screen. That's going to help you enjoy and appreciate the images even more. All right, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and show a few more slides. I also want to encourage you to use the chat function and say hello from wherever you are. We do archive the chats, and if you'd like to ask questions or get our attention in some way, do that via the chat function, and we're going to have the ability to take some questions, and we can even bring you on live to ask your question. But any comments, any questions, any greetings that you want to do, use that chat feature. So today is the observance, the observance of Juneteenth here at the Iverson Museum. And I'm happy to say that not only am I broadcasting from the Iverson Museum, but that the Iverson Museum is participating in Juneteenth programming. The recent protests that have erupted in Syracuse and all over the nation, the protesters here in Syracuse are using the Iverson as one of the protest hubs. There are chalk messages to the community throughout our plaza, and many of our employees are gathered at a socially safe distance with masks today to help register voters. We have masks available for the public. We have sidewalk chalk available. We are making buttons. So if you are in Syracuse, feel free to come, come join us and get a sense of the community of the museum. And if you are not here in Syracuse, then I'm glad that you're joining us as we both celebrate and reflect on the occasion of Juneteenth. You can go to the Iverson's website. Yesterday would have been the Iverson's annual fundraising picnic, which is the biggest event in the Iverson social calendar. The fundraiser was canceled, and so we were not having the picnic in person. But there is a beautiful video that calls attention to the Iverson's awardees and medalists, including Dr. Paul Phillips and his wife Sharon Sullivan, who are the donors that made my position possible. And they are endowing the ceramic gallery and my position in perpetuity. Their gift was close to $5 million, which is certainly the largest gift that was ever given to the museum. So Paul, Sharon, you are well-deserving of the Iverson Medal, and we celebrate it with you here today. Go to the Iverson's website. You can find out about our virtual programming. You can see messages from our director and our board chair, and you can learn what the Iverson is doing during the pandemic to stay connected to our community. You can also find our ceramic database. So go to iverson.org and go to Exhibitions, and under that you can find our ceramic database. And you can use it to research the many teapots that are in our collection, the artists who participated in the ceramic national exhibitions, and you can find out a lot about the Iverson's history there. So please pay us a visit on the web. I'm going to put in one more big plug for something that's coming up, and it also involves the Iverson. The gallerist Jeffrey Spawn has put together an incredible benefit auction that is going to be starting on eBay tonight, starting at 6:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. It's going to feature more than 300 works from artists from all around the world, and it's going to benefit the Craft Emergency Relief Fund. And if you don't know the Craft Emergency Relief Fund, it is a vital, vital nonprofit that puts money in the hands of artists when they have emergencies. Krista Assad, who is going to be joining us later via tape, had a life-threatening injury over five years ago when her house caught fire and she had to jump out of a top floor. She broke her back very severely, and the Craft Emergency Relief Fund was one of the ways that she was able to keep afloat. It helped her with her medical expenses, and she is now making pots and a part of the ceramic community again, partially thanks to the Craft Emergency Relief Fund. There are museum-quality pieces. There are incredible teapots that are a part of this auction. And I'm happy to say that next week on Thursday, starting at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, I'm going to be hosting a virtual cocktail party to kick off the final days of the auction. And we will be welcoming the director of the Craft Emergency Relief Fund. We will be directing, welcoming some people who set the auction up, including Jeffrey Spawn. We'll be welcoming artists and collectors and gallerists who are donating to the cause. And all of the money that's raised will go to the hands of artists. And they have earmarked half of the funds for this auction to go to artists of color and underserved artists. So please watch the Iverson social media for the Craft Emergency Relief Fund auction. Several artists have donated pieces, including Peter Pincus, that part of the proceeds will go to the Iverson directly. So some of the proceeds are being split between the Craft Emergency Relief Fund and other causes, but it is an amazing and a worthy cause. So join, join me on Thursday for that virtual cocktail party. And I just wanted to show one image from, of many of the pieces that are in that exhibition. This is the Polish artist and designer Mark Cechula, Marek Cechula, and his sense of design and community engagement are almost second to none. And we're lucky to have a couple of incredible pieces by Marek in that exhibition. Very quickly, I thought that I would zip through a few of the teapots that grace the Iverson's collection. The Iverson does have historic pieces in our collection of Staffordshire teapots. We have 20th century teapots by designers from Hallcraft and other industrial designers who worked in ceramics. But I want to hearken back to the Ceramic Nationals, which were the largest, most prestigious juried exhibition when it came to the ceramics community. They started at the Iverson in 1932, and they ran through 1972. And through that, we were able to collect the work of a lot of young artists early in their career, which is something that Karen Selwyn very much does, and I'm going to be talking to her about that. So this is an incredible pot, a tea set from Marguerite Wildenhain, the California artist. She was trained by the Bauhaus. She moved to the United States, and she wound up setting up her own pottery in a rural area in California and teaching generations after generations of students. And this piece dates from 1946, so just after World War II. And this was an incredible watershed moment for the ceramic nationals, when they really came into their own. This is an incredible stoneware piece. She would later use a lot of native clays from Pon Farm, the area that she worked in. This has multiple cups along with the creamer and sugar, so you're just seeing a small piece of the collection. Another piece, which is one that I've highlighted in weeks past, this is the artist Minnie Nagoro. So a Japanese artist who was placed in an internment camp during World War II. She met the Alfred ceramic artist Dan Rhodes and was mentored by him. And this piece was featured in the Ceramic Nationals only two years after the end of World War II. And the Iverson was among the different organizations in the ceramic community that helped to build Minnie Nagoro's amazing career, and she is revered as an artist today. A few random pots that I plucked up from images in our collection. We are celebrating Pride Month this month, and queer artists have literally built a lot of the ceramic field, and it is evident across the Iverson's collection. We are fortunate enough to own several pieces by an artist who was a mentor to me and is very important to the Iverson, Mr. Matt Nolan. And this is a Matt Nolan teapot that I feel is one of the most important pieces of his career. It's gigantic. I think it probably stands about 22 inches tall. And this is called the Testosterone Teapot. And so you can see that there are all of these images of men playing rough and tumble sports. There is a Playboy bunny on the finial of the teapot, and you have some camouflage tank guns, not so subtly, coming out of the front of the teapot. It is a monumental teapot in more ways than one. I also wanted to point out, while I'm on the subject of pride, that next Friday's, so I'm not going to host this cocktail party and be lazy the day after. We're going to be celebrating pride by speaking about the work of pioneering ceramic artist Sasha Brastoff, for whom we have important pieces in the Iverson's collection. Important queer ceramic artist, cross dresser, cabaret artist of note. And we are going to celebrate Sasha Brastoff's life and career, and we'll be doing that with one of the last executors of his estate, Steve Conti, who lives in Los Angeles. So look forward to that conversation. Very quickly, on the subject of pride, this is the glate, gay clay teapots, a series of two teapots by the artist Tom McCanna. Lots of iconography, sort of dedicated to coded messages that get sent out within the ceramics world among queer artists. And names of important queer potters and ceramic artists sort of cover the pieces in various spots. Incredible Warren McKenzie teapot from our collection. So the Iverson's teapot collection ranges from the sculptural, and I hate the word whimsical, but the functional adjacent, shall I say, to hardcore functional pieces by noted potters like Warren McKenzie. So this Warren McKenzie pot is a treasured, treasured piece from the collection that was donated by friends of Warren's in his name, I think, back in the late 90s. Peter Shire, the Cobra artist, has incredible pieces in the Iverson's collection. This is the accordion donut teapot from 1984. Kim Dickey, she is an artist who adeptly combines her love of the natural world, performance, politics, her studies into medieval ceramics and iconography, and is someone that I've been actively working to bring to the Iverson's collection. This was a piece that was donated by the Iverson Social Art Club. We're fortunate enough also to have one of Richard Naughtkin's Yishin Cube Skull pots. And today we'll be talking about a range of teapots that take a social message or some bit of information and wrap it in the functionality of the teapot or the celebration of the teapot in able to, in order to present it to the audience. The Iverson has pots from across many different eras, so this is a pot that Karen and Philip Selwyn donated to the Iverson. One of my very favorites, and this is the work of Steve Howell. This teapot dates to about 1985. And I firmly believe that the iconography of the 1980s is back on the rise after, I don't know, being less than prominent for quite a while, and we're able to see it with fresh eyes for what it is. And I find the exuberance and the wildness and the color of this teapot to be incredibly stimulating. And it is currently on view at the Iverson in an exhibition, and we should be open to the public again in a little bit over a month, I believe. We're taking it day by day here, but I would invite you to come look at the selection of more than 17 pots from Karen and Philip that are on the, on exhibition right now in the exhibition, A Legacy of Firsts. The final teapot that I will mention today before we start chatting with Karen and bring Eric Saratella into the conversation is by an artist who's very important to me, Malcolm Davis. Davis was an Episcopal priest and a civil rights activist of note. He, I think, is the only artist in the Iverson's collection who was literally on Nixon's enemies list. And he really transitioned from his direct street activism.
Eric is my son, and the only connection he has to this talk is that when he was learning to walk and we hadn't realized how good he was at making his way around the house by holding on to furniture, he sent a gorgeous, gorgeous robin's egg blue El Saredi flying. But okay, enough about him.
Amazing. Let me do one other bit of housekeeping. I'm going to attempt to go live on Facebook again. Karen, I'll let you entertain. I had asked the question about, talking about your house, which is, I would say, a real art environment. It's really dedicated to showing off your collection in this wonderful way in Rochester.
It is. The house was bought, we've been in this house seven years, and at that point, we knew the collection was, well, over 100 pieces. I'd already given away maybe as many as 50 pieces, but, but what was left was over 100. And the house was chosen in large part because it could display the art in a coherent way. And my husband, who's a scientist, but was a scientist by training, had more fun designing the lighting system for the display cases. We put in strips of little LED lights, and we had to decide on the, the strength. You know, the LED lights have numbers to them, and that indicates how white the light is or how yellow the light is. And we were debating between any pieces that are glazed with cool tones look better with a clearer white, and glazes that skew greens and yellows and browns go better with slightly yellow light. Well, my collection was far too eclectic, and so my husband said, can we alternate lights? And they looked at him first like he was crazy, and then they thought, no, no, there's no reason why you can't. We're just going to have to specially construct the lighting that we put in. And they did, and they even gave it a name, not by Philip's name, but they called it Salt and Pepper Lighting. And it's now one of their standard offerings. But Philip had unbelievable fun figuring out the size and dimensions of the trapezoids that we would put in the corners on which to attach these strips of lighting so that lighting, so that the beams from both directions would cross in the center, and there'd be no shadow being cast from one shelf down to the shelves below, or one piece to its left, or another piece to its right. He had a huge, huge, huge amount of fun, and was very, very, very proud of the setup that he had.
I'm not an envious person by nature, Karen, but when I went to visit you and I got to see all of the teapots and the way that they were displayed, the Iverson is a, you know, historic brutalist building by I M Pei, but he was not a lighting designer, and certainly not one who was designing for the showing of small ceramic objects. So I really wish that I had the capacity to be able to show work here at the Iverson in the way that you were able to show it in your own home.
It's fun, and it's, well, it's a great testament to Philip.
So I want to back up a little bit, and not to get too curator pretentious here. I love to think about the way that the market worked with teapots in particular, and the journey that you've taken as a collector, I think, really dovetails in a perfect way with the rise of the craft gallery, the rise of artists being able to seek higher price points, you know, versus just showing at craft shows or selling at farmers' markets and things like that. Can you talk a little bit about that and where you were when you sort of came into your own as a collector?
Yes, it's definitely been a journey. Back in the mid-'70s, I took a year off from teaching English, and I went back to George Washington University to study art. I always loved it as a high school student, but I never did anything with it. And I wanted a year off from teaching, and so I went to GW, and I took the usual assortment of classes. And it was not a completely successful year. In the decades since I was more actively making art, the old hand-to-eye coordination had gotten quite rusty, is a way to put it. But what I discovered, I who had never had any experience with ceramics, was happiest in the ceramics lab. I studied under a professor named Turker Ozdigan, who was Turkish and quite a character, and he really, really inspired me. And after an incident in a design class where we were supposed to portray our, display our portfolios on a given day, and I was getting totally overwhelmed and didn't think I was going to make it, and I went to the professor and asked if I could have a one-day extension, and he just bore into me and said, absolutely not. If you're going to have a show, the show was going to open, and if you're not ready, then there is no show, and that's under no conditions to deserve. And it just went on and on and on and on. So I was kind of burned after that experience. But what was important is, at the end of my year studying studio art, I said, I can't make art myself. I don't have the time to resurrect very rusty skills and to start the process all over again. And I was returning to work. I said, but, you know, I'm not wealthy. My husband is a scientist. I'm a public school teacher. But I can become a collector, and I can become a collector because, as you said, ceramics were a very reasonably priced art. And I said, that would be the way that I would support the arts. Now, back in those days, and that's the mid-'70s, there was a store in Georgetown, this is the section of Washington, DC, called Georgetown, and it was American Hand. And there were two guys who ran this, and they had the eye. They were unbelievably forward-thinking and adventuresome and supportive of ceramicists. And the ground-level floor was their sort of classic retail shop. I mean, but it was the better end of ceramics, but it was retail. Downstairs was the basement, which was their gallery. And during the gallery season, once a month, they would feature, they would stage a show featuring a different artist. And the Saturday before the Sunday show, there would be a craft demonstration by the artist at what was then called Montgomery County Community College. Okay? Lee Eagle of Craft Council Board fame, I think, underwrote this demonstration. And so we'd go on Saturday up to Rockville, Maryland, on the campus, and see, and, you know, learn about the ceramicists and their philosophy, and watch them do some of the parts of the construction that were doable in a demonstration setting. Then came Sunday. Now, Sunday, I'm laughing, I'm laughing with such pleasure. The way it worked is, we would drive to Wisconsin Avenue right in front of American Hand. And we would get there hours and hours and hours before it opened. I don't remember if it was nine or 10, but just hours before it opened. We'd have newspapers with us, coffee drinkers would have coffee with them, whatever. And we'd sit there and we'd wait. We'd also notice who was, what cars were showing up, and very quickly, we began to associate specific faces with specific cars. So we knew the order in which we had all shown up in the middle of O'Dark 100 in Georgetown, Washington, DC. And when the doors opened to the gallery, we'd all troop downstairs, and we'd line up in the order that we'd arrived on the street, and we'd put our names down on the list. Then we'd have about 15 minutes to survey the work that was on display for sale. And one by one, they'd call our names, and we would have 10 minutes to select two pieces for purchase. And when we'd gone through all the names on the list, we were then, it was free-for-all, and you could buy as many additional as you want. Well, I'm here to tell you that after that buildup, after you'd gotten up in the pitch dark of night on a Sunday morning and driven some reasonable distances, you were buying. You were, it didn't matter whether you liked it, didn't like it. To some extent, you trusted Ed was the more artistic end of the business. And it's been so long, I honestly don't remember his partner. If someone out there remembers, please tell me in the chat, because I feel terrible, terrible. He ran the business in. And actually, you bought two. So for several years, I would buy two, once a month, during the, and I guess there'd be like six or eight shows through the gallery season. And this was not in the Rochester house. This was in a house in Virginia. And firstly, built a display case surrounding the fireplace, and I filled that up with these, again, totally unrelated pieces. It was literally anything I liked. And when that got filled up, we pulled the desk out of the niche, and we built a display case filling that with ceramics. There were also shelves in the opening between the dining room and the living room, and that was filled with glass shelves. And then we filled up the foyer. There was, again, and we just kept, all right. At some point, we literally ran out of space. But more significantly, everything looked terrible together, because there was not enough of any one genre, or one style, or one shape. There was no cohesion. It was quite literally anything I liked. And, I mean, I had fun. I had fun sitting there, reading, and looking around, and seeing everything that I loved. But I thought, this is, this is not going to continue and end well. So I decided that I needed to identify a focus. And it was actually pretty easy to choose teapots. Not that I had a particularly large number, just serendipitously. I had a Philip Cornelius that I broke. I had a French teapot that still exists here in Rochester. That, oh, yes, and the Steve Howell, the wildly exuberant. So that was that. I had three teapots out of, you heard how many shelves I had, three teapots. So it was an act of, it was an statement about the future, that I was going to give away everything I had collected, except the teapots, but that the future was going to be rosy, and I was going to continue to love collecting teapots.
And I have to point out to everyone who's assembled here that quite often, people at museums, I would say more often than not, when we get inquiries from collectors, the collector has more like 1,000 objects, or, you know, some massive amount that's unmanageable. And, you know, when I found out that your collection was really quite manicured and manageable, that was one of the things from the museum side that, you know, made this relationship especially.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It was never KM level. It was never 10,000, much less 1,000. But to me, again, from a very modest sort of background, I thought it was a pretty impressive-sized collection.
So I wanted to ask, you were talking a little bit about, you know, being nudged into picking up pieces when you were having those Sunday morning knock-down drag-out sort of competitions with other collectors. Are there any pieces that came to you in that way that you may not have been as attracted to initially, that came to have sort of greater meaning?
All of them, basically. No, that's overstating it. All of them came to have greater meaning, but there were definitely some that I enjoyed more than others. And I can't, I remember Tom Coleman, and I remember that I liked his celadon ash plates more than some of his abstract designs on things. And yet, I bought one because I recognized the quality. And the longer I kept it, the more I grew to love it. I can't remember. By the time I got rid of them, I loved them all, so it's hard to remember which ones. But I know that existed. You're absolutely right.
So I'm going to bring Eric Saratella in in just a moment, but before we do that, let's talk a little bit about what the unifying factors are for what attracts you to teapots. It's been interesting getting to know you and to pick your brains. And our tastes are actually quite different in a lot of ways, but they converge in other ways that are interesting, too. So if you had to say what the most important quality that you look for in a teapot, what would that quality be?
It has to speak to me.
Okay.
It has to speak to me. And it has to speak to me directly. You know, I share this already with Krista, and you'll hear it in the tape. Yesterday, Garth and I were doing a technical run-through, and he was telling me biographical information about one of the artists. I knew none of this. I knew absolutely none of this. And I was feeling really depressed, because I thought, you know, I really put a lot of passion and energy into collecting these, and yet I knew none of these biographical issues and how they informed the end product. And to hear Garth explain it, it really did inform the end product. And so that was worrying me and bothering me all night. And it suddenly dawned on me, and I shared this already with Garth. When I was an undergraduate, I was an English major, and the approach that we were taught to analyze literature was called new criticism. Well, it wasn't new then, and it certainly isn't new 50 years later, but it was to look at the words on the page only, and not talk about biographical influences, and not talk about historical or sociological influences, just the words on the page. Then, moving forward, I thought, what is my favorite form of art? And it's abstract expressionism, which, again, it's not who can paint the most realistic, recognizable tree, but it's literally paint on canvas. And I thought, you know, there's a through line here. The reason I like, have responded to, teapots is because I just look at what is in front of my eyes, and I react on a visceral level. And that's the through line. And it doesn't matter whether it's a little tiny Yishin teapot that's as big as my hand, and it's so, the tolerances or the fit of the lid are so tight that a hair is all that fits between the lid and the body, or it's these funky, crazy, loosey-goosey things. It just spoke to me.
Oh, I will say that you are a sucker for certain types of teapots and certain materials. And so celadon, I think, being one of them. So I have this incredible Elaine Coleman teapot, and it's a little bit blown out because of the light shining on it, and the degree of the light shining on it. But before we turn to Eric, which Eric's work is definitely the flip side of, I think, what attracts you, can you just talk a little bit about celadon and how celadon speaks to you as a collector?
Okay. You can see, if you hold it a little bit closer, there is wonderful carving all over that. Okay, so the Coleman piece speaks to two of my absolute passions. One is celadon. I am like nuts over celadon. It can be the green-yellow end of celadon all the way to the very blue end of celadon. I can't tell you how many celadon pieces I have. But the other thing I adore about ceramics is the plasticity of clay. I love to see the hand of the maker. And because of the distortions of the shape, I'm getting that, the sense of what is the nature of clay, and how it can be pushed and pinched and depressed, and it holds that shape. To me, this is just, it has a wonderful, it recalls the Chinese, well, the Asian, the Asian, all the Asian historical pieces that you see in a museum, but this is as contemporary as it gets. So.
And Elaine, you know, we'll talk a little bit about the relationship between parts and whole, but the softness of the way that Elaine interrelates all of these pieces. And by the way, Elaine was going to join us today, but she's having eye surgery today, so all of our best is going out to Elaine Coleman, because she needs those eyes to be able to do this work. But I love, look at the way that the carving sort of grows into the handle here. This is an incredible piece. This is an incredible piece.
I love that piece.
I'm going to go ahead and, let's move to Eric's work, which is kind of a flipside of the coin. And this will be the starting point for this conversation. And can you talk about discovering Eric's work during this period? And we'll bring on Eric in just a moment to kind of talk about this as a departure point.
I'm going to tell it as I remember it. Eric, you have some revisions to what I'm sharing.
Rosamond.
The, there was a show company called Sugarloaf Craft Productions, something like that, that had sponsored craft shows up and down the East Coast. And I think from Long Island, maybe the Maryland area was the most southern point. I'm not sure. It was a perfectly charming place to go on a weekend. It was a place where they always had good folk music. The food was very, very interesting. And they had very nice soap. You notice that I'm not talking much about the ceramics. Eric can chime in. Because it was not a place where it was very round and utilitarian and perfectly, perfectly fine. Balance was good. Feet were good. It was perfectly competent work, but it didn't excite me. And I'm walking down the aisle in one of the buildings, and all of a sudden, I see a booth. And I've been going there with Philip for many, many years, and probably twice a year within a year. The November one, we'd always get very nice soaps or leather goods for his secretaries. And so I don't want to say it was Loving Hands at Home. It was way better than that, but it wasn't museum potential. And I see this booth. And the quality was several orders of magnitude, to use a good scientific term, better than what Sugarloaf had ever had. And I went zooming in there. And the piece that you see here was typical of what was on display. And I got to talking with Eric, and he explained that it was his Open Earth series and that he would throw these pieces, wait until they were leather-hard, make some cuts in them, and using some pressure from the inside, descend them somewhat to produce the cracks and stretches. nod your head, Eric, I'm doing okay.
You know, I can't see the image for some reason. I don't have everybody up, so. But that's okay. You're doing, you got it.
Okay. And it was just, in a different way, it was, again, the interaction of the human hand on the clay and the resulting fissures and interesting things that were happening. And of course, I am very, very, very big into wood-fired or Anadama-fired pieces because I deeply, deeply, deeply believed in the killing gods. You don't know what's going to happen in that fire. You have no idea that there's going to be some glorious streak that appears, that there's going to be a disaster. I mean, it just, you do not know. You can't custom order, I would like this to happen in this location on this piece. You just trust it to the killing gods. So I, we talked. You showed me, was it Ceramics Monthly? The article with the, yeah, okay. The old brain still works. You showed me the article about these. And I was thinking about buying, but then you started talking to me about a new direction that you were going, and that you were going in Trumploy. And you brought me an example of Trumploy. And it was, okay.
We all have to start somewhere.
Yes, yes. Hey, you started, I never did. So, and I will actually never forget, Eric used to live in Ithaca. And Ah Leon, A-H-L-E-O-N, I think, who is a world-class, amazing, amazing ceramicist, had come to Cornell only once, I think, at that point, although he came more than the once. And you started taking lessons with him. And the advice that he gave to you, perhaps when you showed him this exact piece that I am referring to, how do I make better pots? And he said, make more pots, I believe, was his answer.
What it was, it actually predates that piece.
Oh, oh.
I had had a corporate career, and I left it to become a potter via, you know, a humble mug-making potter. And I took these teapot workshops from Ah Leon while he was at Cornell. And it wasn't Trumploy or anything. It was more Yisheng teapot-based. And anyway, he and I sort of became fast friends. And the night before he went back to Taiwan, we had a party for him. And I was sitting out on the back deck, talking to him. And at this point, I've been a professional potter for like six months. I've given up my day job, my company car. I'm sleeping in my van at Sugarloaf shows. And I thought, who better to ask about my career than this guy? So I said, hey, Ah Leon, what's next for me as a potter? And he said, Eric, you need to make better pots. And so that's when I kind of held him to it a little bit. And he arranged for me to do what ended up being two artist residencies in Taiwan. And so I went and lived there for almost five months the first time around. And when I came back, the first body of work was both Yisheng teapots, unglazed Yisheng-style teapots, and the Open Earth work, which is where you heat the outside of the clay and then push it from the inside out, and it cracks open, which has got a long, long history. But this was, you know, I had my own interpretation on it. So that's where, really, then Karen, you came in. And I, you know, sort of had changed kind of levels and styles of work at that point from, you know, from like the Sugarloaf standpoint that you were referring to.
But we were, and then, I'm a graduate of the University of Rochester, would go up every year to a big fall, who'd be due call Melior Weekend. And we left that day at Sugarloaf. I didn't buy anything. And, but you said, you know, that you would get in touch with me when you thought your work was ready for me to see again. And more than a year passed. And you got in touch with me. And we met on the campus at the U of R. You loaded your car with boxes and boxes and boxes.
Puck and Trumploy out of the back of my van, right?
Okay. And you hauled it all there. And I had chosen three pieces, the piece that you just saw, another Open Earth piece, and a black one, a Black Laguna clay one. Then, just as, you know, literally I'm about to write you the check. And you took out your phone. And you said, I want to show you a pot that I just dropped off at the Memorial Art Gallery gift shop. And it was a pine Trumploy teapot. I cannot communicate the depths of my, here it comes, here it comes.
So let me make, let me pin, there we go.
I said to Eric, I'm not going to buy the Black Laguna clay one because I must, and I found out the price, and it was like, really a lot more than anything I had bought up till now. But I had to have it. I just, I was irrational.
But keep up the business.
And I called the gift shop. And I said, please take that teapot off of your display. It is sold. And you secretly, in your car, and I in my car, drove. I don't know how long you took to get there, but I drove. I set a land speed record at campus of the university and the Memorial Art Gallery to get to my teapot because I was buying it. It was just no questions asked. And I fell in love. And this is my first of, I now have, well, it's probably, what I'm about to say is probably not true anymore. Because your pieces have gotten so monumental that I really, they're beyond what I can cope with. But I have, A is a gift from you, one of your Yisheng teapots, which happens to be here in the house because in the excitement to get all the teapots to Eversen, it didn't quite get packed, but it's getting there.
We see how you work, Karen.
All right, all right. The two Open Earth teapots, this pine teapot that you'll see, and then a Asian-style, this is my kimono teapot. This is Eric was thinking about because pine is the classic bark that the.
Classic Yisheng Chinese bark.
Yeah, okay. And so, well, here, you tell it. You tell this part of it, the switch to birch.
Well, you know, having studied both Yisheng teapots and Trumploy in Taiwan, you know, and/or China, I wanted to, I wanted to just not be a knockoff of this art form. I mean, it was what I connected with. And so anyway, I wanted to kind of find my own voice in it. One of the first ways to do that was to change surface texture. And so birch has always been my favorite tree. We always had them, I've had them in every house that I've ever lived in, except this one here in North Carolina. And they're a little bit cathartic for me because my dad died when I was 10. And the house I remember him from was just filled with birch trees. It was outside of Albany, New York. And so they're kind of like angels of the forest to me. So I just felt like that was a good direction to go to at least start to, you know, become a rung in the ladder of Trumploy and Yisheng-based work. But later ended up changing more form-wise. But that was really my first step of independence from my teachers and from the classic Chinese styles. So that was, those are the reasons for birch.
And the, the first birch one I got, though, Eric's work has tended to be more literal, trees that look recognizably like trees. And then also the anthropomorphic and trees that look like sassy ladies and dancing ladies and all kinds of, you know, humans with personality. But they are, in fact, recognizable as trees. And so the kimono one was my first foray into an anthropomorphic. The first one I saw, the one I saw at the Smithsonian, I remember it as life-size scale when you're my height. I mean, because I'm not very tall. To me, it felt like it was as tall as I am. As I say, I don't have the space for any of that. So Eric made me a smaller one. And it dances and swirls, and it's just quite wonderful. Now, I've mentioned Black Laguna clay a lot of times because there's a part, a little sort of asterisk to that. One of the subcategories, one of the approaches, was to start doing charred logs. And the Black Laguna clay, my understanding is that that's where you put it to use again. So although I did not end up with an Open Earth Black Laguna, I ended up with a, the teapot, the charred logs. And I think, is that in the vitrine? I think that one is in the.
Yes, the charred one is in the vitrine. So it's on view right now in a legacy of first Eversen collects.
Yes. So when I gave my bequest to the Eversen, I had one and only one requirement. And that was, they had to take every single one of my Saratellas because I have really a cross-section of, at least up till then, all of your styles. And I did not want that broken up.
And you're the, you're the only one who has that, or who's had it. I mean, yeah, my scale has changed, and some things have gotten more sculptural, and they're not always teapots. But, you know, that's really a minor change. I mean, as far as major, major styles, Yisheng, Open Earth, weathered and pine, charred, and of course, birch, and then the anthropomorphic within that. You've really got the whole genre, which is kind of cool. I mean, I've always sort of bragged on you about that.
Yeah, so we're very pleased to be able to have that within the museum. And with your connections to Ithaca and Central New York, you know, I think you've been a part of the Eversen family, I think, for a long time. So I'm really happy about that. I brought, I grabbed a couple of images from your website, Eric, and I wanted to just wrap up our conversation with you by showing some of these monumental pieces, one of which is kind of an abstracted teapot, and the other one is more literal, but kind of at this monumental scale. Let me go ahead and share my screen, and we will get there. Okay, so here's a photo of you working. Can you talk to us a little bit about your studio process and how you would start to embark on a piece that's this monumental? How improvisational versus how planned do you have to be?
It's, I would say, 90% improvisational. I sometimes start with a sketch, and usually that sketch is old. So I'll have an idea, and I'll make a rough sketch so that I remember it. Some of these pieces take several months to make, so I can't always just hop on what's in my mind. So that becomes a starting point because I need to, at some point, either make a pot on the wheel or get a slab of clay to get started. And then the rest really becomes that proverbial dance that we clay people have with the clay. And so I work very intuitively and very kind of three-dimensionally. I've got stairs in my studio that I can go and look from above. So I'm working like a Michelangelo, right? 360 degrees. I look at every angle. I look at it from above in case it's in a museum and somebody's looking down over a balcony. So continually working and tweaking the design. And then the details, the look that makes it look like wood, that also is really kind of an intuitive thing. I don't have any models or anything in the studio. I feel like if I just copied a log, it would be stiff. And it wouldn't really be art. It would be good craftsmanship, which is part of the art. But the real art comes from the story and the emotion that goes into it. So I'm kind of, I guess I'm kind of totally mindful and totally oblivious at the same time as I'm carving the details. It's just a matter of that zen-like zone. And when it's all said and done, it just ends up kind of looking like wood. So that's the short story, start to finish.
Before we talk about this next piece, I wanted to talk a little bit about your gallery in New York City, which is the Jason Shock Gallery, which is one of the most distinctive galleries, and certainly for art fairs, one of the most distinctive spaces in any art fair. But Jason's history is with, starting out with 19th century, late 19th century, early 20th century European porcelain. Can you talk a little bit about your relationship with Jason and the way that you fit into the kind of eccentric worldview that he has as a gallerist?
Yeah, Jason is, you know, Jason's the real deal. The guy is just amazing. Incredible eye for artwork. And really, like you said, he made his, he made his name in this French art nouveau clay work. And also, as a good businessperson, recognized the shift from kind of classic and antique work that was going on in the art world into more contemporary. So he made a decision to build a contemporary line along with his historic work. And he started with a guy named Gareth Mason, UK potter. And I don't know what number I was, but I was his first American ceramicist. And what happened was he saw a teapot very similar to the jiving teapot that Karen has, the pine teapot in Carnegie. And I got a one sentence email, Jason is very to the point as a business person, and I get this one sentence email that says, would you like, would you like New York representation? And he's standing next to my teapot in Carnegie. And I'm thinking, is this spam? You know, we artists get spammed a lot. I'm like, what's going on with this? So I actually had to have him vetted because he wasn't a contemporary gallery. Well, I wasn't familiar with him anyway. He, I checked with some galleries that I knew and some collectors, he turned out to be the real deal. So I started with Jason and we've had since a relationship, I guess we're going on eight years now. And he's, he's just represented my work phenomenally. He, he's the type of person that he's got to believe in the artwork and he's not going to rep it if he doesn't. So his, his heart's really in it, which I think is, is part of what makes a difference for him as a gallerist. And he really cares about his artists, like he really wants to see them succeed and be a part of their career. So anyway, that's how, that's kind of how I started my relationship with Jason and it continues this day to, to just be phenomenal.
And Jason is sort of known to a lot of people here at the Eversen because we just hosted Gareth Mason for an exhibition and wrapped up an exhibition. So it's interesting to see the different sides of the Jason Jacques coin.
Yeah, very eclectic in his, in his style and, and tends to actually be bright. I don't, I don't always sort of fit within that, other than his focus is, is on quality and message and design. So he's, he's not repping me because it looks like wood, he's repping me because of the design of the work.
Amazing. So I have an image here up on the screen of one of your monumental pieces. I believe this is over three feet tall. You still, in your work, even when you're working monumentally, take cues from vessels and teapots. Can you talk a little bit about that scaling up and scaling down of your process and how teapots still continue to inform your work to this day?
Right, so, and this one is a teapot. So that piece that juts out to the right, if you're looking at the screen, is the spout. You can see the handle to the left and then up at the top is hollow and there's a piece that pulls out and that's actually the lid. And I, I think it comes from, from two places. One is I really started as a production potter. I took a pottery class, fell in love with clay, evolved into becoming a production potter. And that's when I met Alian, as I talked about earlier. So my mind from a clay and an art standpoint is just always based in, in functional form, even if it's not truly functional. Then the second part of that is because I trained in the Yishin tradition and made, furnished Yishin style teapots with the tight lids and all of that. The first Trumploian ceramics was done in the 1600s in Yishin, when they started to make teapots look like pine and, and other wood and gourds and things like that to integrate nature into the tea ceremony. So it kind of became a way to honor both my history as a functional potter, whether it's a teapot or a bowl or whatever, and also honor the history of Trumploian clay. So the, the two of them really sort of inform, I would say, the bulk of my work.
Do you have any upcoming projects or do you have things that you're planning with Jason that you'd like to put in a plug for?
Put in a plug? Actually, I have two international shows that we're, we're working on, but quite honestly, with, with COVID, everything is so on hold that I don't have that much to plug. He did just open a spring show at the gallery. And that's all of his artists, so they'll be working that, I can give a plug on that. And, and that would be jasonjac.com is his website for information on that. So hopefully we'll have some really good stuff coming up as soon as things kind of start to open.
Awesome. Well, Eric, we miss you here in central New York and we look forward to a visit from you at some point when things open back up.
I would let you know how much I love the Eversen, so thanks for including me here. And Karen, thank you so much for being such an amazing collector and friend.
And friend, feeling is entirely mutual.
All right, so I want to show a couple of more teapots on my end and talk with Karen and we might have another special guest out there in the audience. If you're available, Kevin Snipes, and want to turn on your computer, I'll let you chime in as well. That conversation that Karen and I taped with Krista Assad, I think I'm going to make it available as bonus content. We've, we let about 10 minutes go when we were trying to reorganize things after being hacked. And again, I apologize for that, but this will be the first ever Eversen object study bonus content. And thanks Karen for helping me tape that conversation with Krista earlier. So I'm going to bring out this Kevin Snipes pot, which I was so tickled to be able to have this in the collection and it has been on fairly constant view since I got here as curator. Kevin is someone that I have worked with as a curator several times, actually had the pleasure of commissioning him for a pot when I was editing an issue of Studio Potter Magazine, but that's a different story. But he's someone whose work that I absolutely love. And here is this porcelain teapot. And Kevin really works with figuration when it comes to the vessel. So he's playing on this long tradition of putting figures into his vessels, but then have to interact. And it's great that Kevin's, Kevin's people on his pots are sort of always looking. They're looking around corners, they're looking at each other. There is desire, there is thwarting of desire. This particular piece, Karen, can you, you, you remember what the male is saying on-
The male is saying, come to me in, in this bubble, this dialogue bubble, in where, basically where the heart should be, there is a little heart that is drawn. So there's some suggestion of a love relationship, whether it's unrequited love, whether it is love that he has an expectation that the female on the other side will indeed come, it's like proposing in a public place, you hope she's going to say yes.
He is counting down. So you can see that on one side of the pot, it says 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 1. So that's an interesting layer. And I will say that Kevin likes to leave things open to interpretation by his audience and likes to leave gray areas there.
And I, yes, this-
Hey, Kevin. All right, so we have Kevin on the line. So Kevin, you can, again, correct us if any of our assumptions are wrong, but we just had a great conversation about-
No, that-
The stuff-
I've been, I've been listening. I'm sitting outside and there's a lot of birds behind me that might be distracting.
They're welcome. We're enjoying having them in the conversation today. One thing also that I'll point out is that it's interesting that there are all of these layers of sort of communication and playing with language that Kevin engages in. And there's a little speech balloon here that has some text that has been sort of X-ed out here. So, you know, coded messages or communication that's indirect and not necessarily connecting, I guess, as I put on my curator brain. Kevin, would you like to speak to the ways that you like to play with language and text on your pieces?
Sure. So one of the things that I'm very interested in is coded messages, like you said, but the idea of communicating and miscommunicating. And I think that a lot of this research or investigation stems from being an African American and often having felt misunderstood or being looked at as an other and not really wanting to make work that was necessarily about just sort of African American experiences, but wanting to really dig deeper under that concept and to what does it mean to be an other? So on, on my pieces, I typically, I, I started hand building specifically to frame each of the figures so that they are on opposite sides of the piece and create that tension between the two sides. So, you know, their eyes are glancing sideways, they're referring to each other even though they can't see each other. So there's that distance of the vessel that's between the two. So that's kind of the basic setup. And then there's always some sort of thing where one person says something, but you're not quite sure if they mean something good or something bad, all those sort of things.
Are you an over thinker? Do you, do you let things swirl in your head and-
Definitely.
Something we share. Can you, can you, can you talk a little bit about the teapot? I mean, this is a wildly inventive teapot that if you are tuning in, you can see that these holes are pierced all the way through this form. And there's basically a little straw that is attaching the body of the teapot to the, this is sort of a magic teapot in a way. It has a spout and the, it's a little like an English puzzle jug in a certain way. Can you talk about that negation of the implied negation of the pot?
Yeah, so I, I just turned off the video. Will, will the image, will your image just be there if I-
Yeah, I can pin my video here and let you narrate.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's a secret passage teapot. And what that means is that there's actually a passageway that goes through that hold part and the teapot can actually pour if you really want it to. And, you know, like everything stems from this idea of the relationship. So the idea of the secret passage is not about the physical teapot, it's more about the emotional relationship between the two people, that there's this passageway between the two people. And a lot of times I think of, you know, I make things that are, are, that play with the idea of function. You know, the function here is not the function of a teapot, that's not the important thing. The important thing is the, the, the transference of not tea, but of energy and emotions and intellect. So I'm playing with the idea that the teapot is almost like a, a alchemical vessel where you put something in and then something passes through and comes out the other end. But it's more about emotions and intellect. Yeah, so I do think a lot.
Karen, I'll, I'll call on you. You know, you lived with this teapot for many years and can you talk a little bit about your attraction to this teapot, which is very different from kind of the vast majority of pots in your collection, but there is something that called out to you?
Yes, um, I was, surface decoration was something that I only eventually came to appreciate, that I, I really was focusing a lot on form and the perfect shape and the perfect glaze. And even if the perfect glaze was kind of a very personalized definition of perfect. I mean, if you can hold up the Krista teapot for a second, you'll see what I mean by that. And Kevin's picture is pinned in the center, but people could see. You turn it so that the two blues, the two blue streaks are showing on the audience.
Okay, so.
Okay. Can you make that, can you make your own image the big one, by any chance?
It should be the big one for everybody.
Now it is, now it is. Okay. So can you see there are two streaks of blue? Something happened, again, in the kiln, nothing that anyone can control, that caused the, the glaze to make those two beautiful streaks. And if you look at the front, the point at the sharp end of the teapot, you can turn it around the other way. Right there, you may be able to see, yeah, the crystalline, you can begin to see the crystal glaze formation that's, that's there and how the glaze is pulling away from the sharp edge. Okay, so those historically were what I was drawn to, a lot about the serendipitous things that happened in the fire. And Kevin's was the first teapot that, when I saw the, the images on it, I just fell madly in love. I, I felt a sense of play, I felt a sense of discovery, not quite understanding what it was that I was looking at, but intrigued by it, absolutely loving the pierced holes because that seemed to, there's a real big fight between the teapot purists who say that the only teapots you can collect are teapots that are functional. And the group in which I belong is if it's got a spout, it's got a handle, I declare it to be legitimate teapot material. And so without, it took me a while frankly, to even discover there was the secret channel. I thought literally it was a non-functional teapot. Apologies, Kevin, what can I say? I was so focused on the surface decoration that I never got in, looking inside the pierced front there.
So this is a, oh, go ahead, Karen, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, you, you, I can pick up.
So we are actually going to have to kind of wrap things up, but I think that we've kind of arrived at the perfect point and we've, we didn't really, we didn't really plan things out like this, but this was like a really great reveal at the end. This is like the, the end of the usual suspects. And so out of all of the teapots that I've shown today, Karen, how many of these have you had tea out of?
Ah, you know the answer and you, you deliberately decided to embarrass me. None.
So I don't think it's embarrassing at all. And in fact, from the museological side, the fact that these teapots, you know, are sort of unused, I think is something that makes things a little bit easier on our end. Karen is the single best art handler that I have ever encountered in my life. She, she definitely like missed her calling in a certain way and all of these pots arrived to the Eversen immaculately packed and not, not a chip or ding in any of them. But, you know, Karen, you are a tea drinker and I think, you know, we, we both share that. I have a teapot or two in my life that I, that are the functional teapots and I'm constantly drinking out of handmade things, but I have many a teapot in my collection that I have never sort of had tea from, although I do sometimes get some pleasure out of putting tea in the otherly functional teapots.
Well, I bought a teapot, believe it or not, with the express purpose of putting tea in it. And for one reason or another, it was an ash glaze. And for one reason or another, I, I never brewed tea. And I bought it from, oh, Texas, sorry. And the, one year later, and I bought it at, I call it Winter Market, ACC's Baltimore Winter, that's its whole form. And one year later, he was there again and he had now a much larger teapot with the same glaze. And the reason that I had loved the glaze is it went in huge sheets down the side of the teapot rather than the usual rivulets that I associate with ash glaze. And, and this was, I think it was oak. And he showed me the handle. And this handle had a little streak of lavender in it. And you may recall that, you know, earlier I talked about things happen in the fire. Well, this guy didn't add a drop of lavender commercial glaze on the handle just to make it that way. Something happened, whether the, the glaze had changed chemically in the year that it had been first formulated or what, but it had this streak of lavender. So I bought the second teapot only now because it was now a sort of demonstration of the effect of time on glaze chemical changes. There went the functional teapot that I had been willing to use. And now, if I want tea, I take an aluminum pot, heat up a cup of water, make my tea- And now if I want tea, I take an aluminum pot, heat up a cup of water, make my tea that way. So it's probably never be.
So in wrapping things up from the Iverson side, I want to point out that since I arrived here close to two years ago, at least some of Karen's collection has been on view in some exhibition somewhere. And right now there are multiple exhibitions that have Karen's pieces in them. So when you come to the Iverson, you'll be able to experience her pots. And then when, when we open up our café in, we are going to gradually open our café thanks to COVID-19, but we are going to start with coffee and tea probably later this fall. And I want to say that, you know, our café is going to be built around a collection of functional pots that you, the visitor, can, can actually use. So these come from the collector Louise Rosenfield. And she's a great pottery collector herself, but these are for use in the café. So we are hoping to have a selection of teapots that will have curated tea blends that are specific to that pot that you'll be able to, just like when you went to the American Hand and had to compete for being the first person to get those pots. Karen, if you want your tea blend in your teapot, you'll have to show up on time to get that pot here at the Iverson. So look for our evolving café project, which will begin its opening in the fall. Karen, I want to thank you for joining us today. Eric, I'd like to thank you for joining us and Kevin as well. And please stay tuned to our social media and I will put up the bonus Krista Assad episode as well. Join us for the auction preview for the Surf Plus auction. The auction actually begins tonight at 6:00 PM. You can find information on my personal social media and look for it on the Iverson social media. The preview party will be next Thursday at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. Then I'll be getting up the next day and celebrating the end of Pride Month by talking about the ceramicist Sasha Brastoff. And that will be a lively, amazing conversation. Sasha Brastoff was a drag performer even while he was serving in World War II when he performed as Carmen Miranda. And after he got out of the army, he actually became Carmen Miranda's costume designer before becoming a well-known ceramic artist and designer in the Los Angeles area. So that will be this next week, same time, same place. And we will keep the hijackers from hijacking it. And we will have our amazing programming. All right, so Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to Eric and Kevin as well and for everyone who tuned in. All right, cheers, everybody. We will stick around and keep the camera on if you want to say hi to Karen or say hi to me or Eric or any of the other artists. But I will stop the recording now. And again, all of these recordings are archived. You can find them on the Iverson page and you can also find them on our Facebook page as well.